Then would you do the role call?
Bob Harmsmire.
Here.
Jim Ewens.
Here.
Dave Elliott.
Here.
Kirk Hart.
Here.
Brian Holt.
Here.
Robert Nelson.
Here.
Would you stand with me for the like. I feel like it's. Nothing happens on that. Okay, the cloud is staying spread in. Or don't make them. Maybe this. I have no comments tonight. Other than that, I appreciate Dave for stepping in to help us out.
No problem.
I was gone and Robert zoomed in at the meeting. I appreciate that. Sorry that missed. I'm sure a lot of people really liked that when I was gone, maybe. I don't know. Um, no comments from the public tonight. Uh, item C approval of budget revenue neutral rate resolution. Whereas the revenue neutral rate before Scott U B College was calculated.
Uh, uh, no, uh, or last month.
That's last month.
At heart, see, but I think I did it wrong.
The problem.
Let's do that one again.
Yeah. Yeah. Let's move, Ryan. All right. Months to help. It's the same. Like me. We're going old school.
Sean will intercept with this.
This is great. And look, I even have, yeah, I could. Okay. Um. There are no comments from the chair. I don't know what I did. There are no comments from the public. Consent agenda five. Approval of agenda. Uh, item B approval of minutes previous regular board meeting. Conducted September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. We will treasure for bills claims approval personnel actions. Okay, now. Consent agenda. Approval of agenda. Be approval of minutes of previous meetings attached to the minutes of the regular board meeting conducted on September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. I am see approval of treasury report bills and claims attached to the treasurer's report and the bills and claims report. The approval of personal actions. Separation Jordan Evans, assistant dance coach effective October tenth, twenty twenty three. Transfer transfers Marcy Myers from director of student life to executive assistant to the president. October fifth, twenty twenty three. It is recommended that consent agenda items be approved as presented.
I just have one question for Julie, just. I think we need a list of acronyms. Because I get. The one is I D E A.
I wrote that down as a question too. I can remember.
I D E A is is the the other organization that handles all the background stuff. Okay. I I knew it had to do that up in that, but.
So what is that? The letter to.
Um. Institute of. Development of educational. Is that about rights, Julie?
Advance now.
Advance there. I didn't come up with the idea.
Okay, I I think you just call me.
So I knew it had to do something with that, but I wasn't.
Yeah.
You could have totally made something up.
Just fine. It seems to work, okay. That was my, that was my only question, just clarification of what that was. This week, just go in action discussion, is that it?
What's the. Julie, there's notes.
Oh, that's right, the September.
Financials are.
Oh, yeah, that we weren't quite finished. And we're really not quite finished tonight. We weren't in time for me to bring a new report, so. Um. We decided to put in a preliminary report. The one thing that was missing, um. Last Wednesday, Thursday, when we sent it out, was the U V. Um, posting, which is about seventy seven thousand dollars, and then we had another small payroll entry. But when we get those in and I get it finalized, then I was gonna give it to Dr. Kegler and he'll send it out to me. That and the treasurer's reports, preliminary on both of them.
That answered your question.
So the U M B statement? Or is there something different? I mean, there's a.
The U S B entries are not in there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
A letter came in motion.
I shall move.
Moving second to Julie, would you call?
Ewens.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Hart.
Yeah.
Yes.
Nelson. Bartle Stein.
Yes. My next page was fifty, is that correct? Ask. This will take active discussion item.
I think we can handle it. I don't know.
Uh, administrative updates. Uh, so.
Hey. Uh, we've been working on the schedule that is supposed to open up for spring twenty twenty four and. Summer twenty twenty four, and we are gonna be opening this Wednesday. Um, so my office has been busy with that. Uh, last week, the Dr. Kegler and I met with John Dear kind of advisory board meeting we had because. Uh, the dealers in the area have been asking us to produce more students from our program, and it's a two-year program, and. We only have two faculty members, so it's hard, and they wanna. Uh, go with the option of a certificate, so we met and it was unanimously approved by all. John Dear people and all the dealership in the area, they are very excited about the program and they wanna. Get it started in. Summer of twenty twenty four, so that's quite exciting. I'm really.
Let's start. What program?
Uh, John Dear certificate, so.
Go from a two-year to a one-year.
Uh, they they will still have the option of an associate degree, but we in, uh, in addition to that, we are going for a certificate so that we will. Produce more kids since they need more. Entrants at the dealership.
Um, what kind of numbers are they looking at?
Uh, they are thinking, uh, starting with the summer, they're gonna. Have twenty hits because they need to graduate the twenty which are in the program for the associate. And then, uh, following year, they are thinking forty hits would be entering, so. Uh, Kent would be teaching at twenty and Dale would be teaching twenty, and if it grows, then we may have to look into hiring another instructor.
That's what my question should be.
Yeah, so right now, I think, yeah, the cost is, yeah. It shouldn't say the cost. There is no cost, but that's what I believe when we start this program because we already have the resources. But if it grows, then yes, we need to probably look into it, and I already talked to one of the. I'm gonna say guy from Heri- Heritage because he was very excited, so like we have heard that they burn buildings. For their students, so there may be a partnership that they they would be interested in.
And. And we may wanna consider. Having a. Another. And instructor over there anyway, just because. If something happens to Ken or Dale, especially now they're going to the. Once we transition to this one-year certificate. That's gonna put a lot of stress if they're gone for a day or two or something like that, so we may. You know, really need to maybe examine. So if if that's if that's on the cards, because. Um. According to those guys. It was overwhelmingly. Approved.
Yes, it was unanimously approved. We we thought because we've met, we've had the couple of meetings before where. A representative from John Dear wasn't on board because they they want the students to graduate with an associate degree. And that's what their concern was that if we do offer a certificate, most of the students are just gonna go for a certificate and not do their associate. So now we came up with the option. We are keeping all the classes which are offered for John Dear student asses and the gen ed part. Since a whole lot of students take gen ed classes in high school. So they can be front-loaded when they come here, so or they may have to. Take it during intercession or not, if if they are missing a class or. And the other option I think they liked when we talked to them was creating a bucket for gen ed. Courses be because before it was sociology, a little bit of technical analysis, that is part of their degree, so if a student takes psychology instead of sociology. We can give them credit, so if we create those kind of gen ed buckets. For, um, science and, um, social sciences and student has already taken it as part of the high school or a concurrent class. Then it'll be easier for them that they come and take the certificates and they get two degrees, I mean, two diplomas, one a certificate and associate, so they were. Really excited about that.
So we give the student the option to.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yes, we are not, because that's what their major concern was that. Yes, students are not gonna do that, so it's it, and they want their students to have associate. And there was another talk of, we said, we can't do it, but when the student does go to a dealership, if there is a difference in pay in terms of if you have a certificate or if you have associate, that encourages students to come back and. Finish the degree, or if they're working at a dealership, they could take those classes online, then it passes online if they haven't done it in high school. Then that would help too.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
And the other piece that we haven't mentioned, but we are the first institution in the. In the state or in the world or in the in a nation.
Yes.
To have this.
Yes, and that's what they're.
One, one.
One year, John, your certificate, and that's what they're listening. So we are kind of piloting it, and if it's successful, I think they wanna replicate it with other schools too, which is kind of exciting.
Excellent. How big is the region we're servicing here for dealership?
Uh, I don't know.
About mid Missouri. To mid Kansas and then little north like in, uh. North to like Nebraska line and then south to right along with so just that. Uh, Heritage and Prairieland are the two.
Yeah.
Major, um. Owners and then they have stores in this region, but most of them are are within within that range. Isn't it? Northern City has a program west of here and then. There's there's at least one in Nebraska, but we do pull some from, uh. Um, Oklahoma, maybe from Arkansas, but I know.
Excellent, thank you. Julie?
Oh, she's.
Oh, you're not done?
Just a couple more things.
No, no.
Uh, working on the interim report, which is supposed to go to H L C pretty soon. Uh, the deadline is September, sorry, September, November seventeen. We are hoping to, um, get it. Sent to them or uploaded by October thirty first. That's the date, but they have plenty of time if they have any questions or, um. They need anything or we can do that. Uh, the other thing I'm working on is program reviews, uh. For the programs which are up for a review this year, so helping those completing the assessment reports and all that good stuff.
Great, thank you. Julie?
Sure. Um, just the normal things in the business office right now, particular attention to, um. Student accounts, processing of financial aid, that type of thing, getting them on board, um. Ready to enroll, which opens Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and, um. Or making them aware if they have, uh, balances due, that type of thing. Logistics, they're just working on their fleet repairs, that type of thing. Um, I T, there's a. A lot of projects here they're working on, uh, making great progress. But a lot of things in work for them and. We did also have this week, um. Which I know a lot of Tom's departments were in that meeting and then almost all the business office and financial aid. Our first two big days training session with Jen Zabar, so that was interesting. Didn't get all of it done, but, um. You know, I know I T was in part of that, that's what reminded me of that, and so. That is really kicking off and getting with it. Um, financial aid has provided some interesting information, a little different than normal. They're the last one on here, um. To give you some idea of where we are in loan processing and and we're in good shape for this past history. Um, most of our students are in in grace or, um. Forbearance, of course, I think most of you know that most students came back in to where they, um. Have to begin to set up payments for student loans. So we'll kind of watching that closely to see where it goes, Elijah ends. Um. We looked good in that that point at this point in time for that, um. The one thing, I think he made some notes at the bottom. I can't remember all of them, um. But, um. Most of them are in some kind of payment plan or working on contingent income and then. Uh, you know, our our ability to contact them is good. We don't have any invalid. Email or addresses, that type of thing, so that's most, well, Hila is part of the company that that, uh. Monitors our loans and our default rates and that type of thing, so. Pretty good shape there. Any questions for me?
I have a question. On, uh, page, it looks like sixty-two to get the, uh. Uh, is that enrollment data there? Total count of. Institutional student information records. My luck is that, right?
Are you talking about under financial aid office?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, the one thing you have to watch on that, yes, our enrollment is down. I think Dr. Kegler talked about some of the last meeting. But when it talks about. Data for twenty-three, twenty-four versus data for twenty-two, twenty-three. One is here, the current data for twenty-two, twenty-three is for two full semesters. Where the data for twenty-three, twenty-four is just currently the default.
So that unduplicated applicants, would that be a better? Number to look at?
The unduplicated.
The so unduplicated ac- applicants. One thousand three hundred sixty-five compared to nineteen eighty-four for total count. And then compare that year over year or. I guess.
It.
How does how does this affect things? If, you know, it's down, I mean. What how does that roll through to like the budget and all this this sort of?
Our enrollment is down, so yes. You know, it it bothers me when I look at it that. Um, our Pell eligible applicants is eight sixteen compared to nine ninety-six last year. That should pretty much. Hold true, because once you file a Pell application, it is for the whole year. So yes, that does bother me. Um. The number of ICers, which that's the student information stuff that we get from the Department of Ed when they filed or buy their, uh, FASB. It's down, yes. Um. So. Yes, we are seeing a drop in Pell applicants or. Documentation number of applicants.
We may have some more information. Later on.
Okay. Oh, okay.
That might help.
Yep.
Answer some of those questions.
Anything else, Julie?
No, that's.
Any more questions?
Uh, we blocked the Clary statistics for the Department of Education, which is the crime. I safety, I statistics for the all of our campuses. Uh, it's due on the eighteenth of every month or of every October, we we submitted it. Uh, earlier this month. Uh, that's a requirement for the Clary Act, uh. And we got that taken care of. And we got that taken care of. Uh in addition, we also produced a safety and security report. Uh to be compliant with Clary as well, it's required that we distribute that to all faculty, staff and students at the first of every October. And we did that a couple of days before the first of October, so that was taken care of as well. I I did give you guys a printed version because I was uh dealing with some segments at the end of last week. Uh and so I didn't get it submitted, but uh. We hosted a big show doing pianos for student activities at the end of last week or beginning of last week. I had a good showing for that and the students had a good time. Uh we had a free movie night at the Fort Cinema. Uh we're a hundred, first hundred students received free admission. And we're forming a committee with faculty, students and staff to gather input for future student life activities. And we're gonna start those meetings at the end of this month to be able to prepare a calendar for. Uh next spring to make sure that we have a full calendar of activities for the students to be able to uh participate in and. I focus on. Making this a place where everyone wants to be. Uh advising is busy with uh fall intercession enrollments and reviewing the summer and fall schedule or spring schedule. With the instruction office, uh they're processing withdrawals for fall, setting up the pre audits. I am doing a lot of the reporting that's uh mandated by the state. And uh registry, you can see on there all of the reports and what they're doing. Uh Courtney has been very busy with. Uh working with Ben and Suzie on the J one implementation. Uh there, I'm glad that we have them to carry forward with that project, cause. It is a lot of heavy lifting and it's good to have some institutional knowledge there. Uh and they're doing a good job on that of keeping all of us in line and. I'm scheduled to uh get us implemented as soon as we possibly can. Uh down to admissions, they, October is the CPC month, which is uh our college career planning fairs. And so they go to very large events across the state and uh the admissions crew visits with students that comes in. Tries to collect as many prospect cards. Uh it's Kansas's best way to be able to expose as many students as possible to institutions. And we're signed up for twenty two of them for the month of October. Uh and we have three uh admissions counselors who have been rotating. Uh going to them and bringing back quite a few pro- prospects. Uh and so we've also on top of that been hosting. Uh students on campus visits and going to our area high schools. I and let's see. I'm open for any questions if you guys have anything on there.
Any questions?
Tom, is there? What's the community colleges involvement with manufacturing day coming up?
We will be there all day. Uh with that blue collar manufacturing is that the way you're referencing?
Now, I was I was gonna ask you about that too on Wednesday.
Yeah, we will be at that.
Like November the eighth, I think of manufacturing day where they're bringing the. And Chamber sets that up to hide the gold around.
We'll be at that as well. And so we'll have admissions there. Uh there's, it's a good time of the year for that type of stuff. Because there's also an event that Marcus and Santos are going to over in Hutchinson that also hosts about eight thousand students every year. Uh and so a lot of those. Career and planning fairs and everything are uh geared towards the manufacturing occupational side of things. Uh which is where our sweet spot kind of is right now. Uh and so whenever there is an event like that and focused on the recruiting of students in those areas will certainly be represented.
One of the um Lindsay with the Chamber reached out and um they will be. Hosting students over in the welding, over at the welding building, across the street. Um and then all the students will come back here and we're trying to finalize some sort of lunch for our students to to come through. And grab a meal for the manufacturing day.
Cool. Good to have them on campus.
Yes, and Chris down in C-Tech hosted one two two weekends ago, two. Two Fridays ago, so um. And he didn't tell me the number of students that he had, but uh they started out at his location and then went to a couple of areas of spots around Crawford. So uh he was pretty excited about uh being able to. Park those students around and and have them on on campus, so uh we participated in both of those one that I hear, or will, I should say. Okay, um I Luke is not here tonight, he is feeling a little under the weather, but he did provide me. With his reports, uh he apologizes for not being able to make the board meeting, he will be watching online, so I am reading what he sent me. Uh don't mess up these logs, I know, it was a lot of pressure. Um huge conference win for volleyball um last week, uh placing them in seventh place in the conference. If they win on Wednesday at Highland, uh we will probably make the sixth place. This will be the first time in the playoffs in four years. Um he wanted to say that there is a huge following on social media for the Midnight Madness, which happened last Thursday. Uh they had a huge following, over one thousand likes and views over social media platforms. Um lots of compliments from the public of how well the student athletes did and how much fun everyone had had in the community. Uh he'd also like to thank Brick Street and Domino's for gifts uh for the contestants. Um I will say that as I had a chance to visit, for those of you that were there or swatched online, the dunk contest. I had a chance to visit with uh Coach Cochran and right before that, he goes. Um he goes, I hope that uh I said, so the dunk contest is next, and he said, yeah, I'm really excited, he goes, I just hope our guys get a dunk down. Uh or two, and I'm like, oh, they'll get some dunks, that was not an issue. Well, I think there might have been two dunks that were made out of the entire. And so he was like, well, I guess I jinxed myself, and I said, well, I probably didn't help that, so. Uh but he did guarantee that there will be a few more than that uh in the season, so. Uh he was pretty, he was pretty certain of that, so the the students had fun. Um if you didn't get a chance to go out and watch um. And Julie, I think, can explain it a little bit better, but uh women's basketball, we know that, we know women's basketball was featured as part of that evening. Uh because they're one of our sports on campus and they had two people out there that started doing the cupid shuffle. And so they started dancing and the next thing you know is more or less a flash mob that wasn't playing that. Probably a hundred or so of our students and fans got out there and started doing it with them, so it was really, really. Uh it's really, really a good thing and 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 so I appreciate the students for uh. For for helping out, but it was it was a fun evening.
Were you out there?
I was not out there. Um I was, I was at uh senior night at the high school during that, and I did come and watch the dunk. And I have video proof. Uh it's been finally right, and it's a little bit about, man, I could, you know, I could have got out there and done better than you guys. Not at all, so that was, that was good. So that was Luke's report. All right, and so I am going to move uh to the podium, but I'm asked. You guys to turn around so that you can see the report and Chris is gonna get me set up so that. So um. As noted, Marcy Meyer started in my office um last week. And she helped me put this together, so um I'm gonna throw her under the bus, so if there's any typos or any inaccurate information, we're gonna blame it on Marcy. We're not gonna blame it on me, uh but.
It's super swell to know you have our back.
Well, I'm sure she's watching online, I will get, we'll get an airful about it tomorrow, but no, I I I went through it, I think we're good, so. Uh this is the October uh border for, what I wanted to do was I wanted to give you guys a. Uh uh some information, now it won't, it won't work, uh which is okay. Um I wanted to give you guys some information about our enrollment and and kind of take a look at some of the enrollment trends, so look at uh since twenty sixteen. Uh our fall FTEs, so our fall full-time students um. There's, you can see that there's a little bit of a decline. Um and why it goes up and then it goes down, but if you look at the the number where we started on twenty sixteen. Of twelve ninety nine, and now you look at where we're at today, we're at eleven oh five, and that's a significant drop. Part of that drop is the part that Brian was asking about, about why is there a difference between between some of those numbers, a sharp dis- difference? And so um you know, the purpose of this is not to s- not to point fingers, not to place the blame, not to do anything other than just to provide you with information. Um we we have an idea, we know kind of where we're where we're going and where we'd like to go, and so the problem is just getting there. But this is just historical information and I can, I'll send this out later on if you guys wanna take a look at it as well. Um so our spring FTE during the same timeframe and spring is always a little lower than the fall, right? Because you don't have, the students aren't starting. Uh we do lose a lot of students, not a lot, but we do lose students because they find the college is not for them. And so the number is is going to be lower, it's typically lower, um and it's not anything to be alarmed about. With the exception of, if you look at spring twenty sixteen to spring twenty twenty three, um that's, that's a pretty significant drop. Um and and how we, how we got there, how we get there um. Who, who knows, I mean, you know, there will be some who say that, um you know, we lost a a a pretty big program during that timeframe. But that number has been subsidized or supported, I think, by some of the other things that we're doing and that we've done. So you know, we we can't classify it all on that particular area, uh but we can't, I mean, it it does attribute to some, some of our concerns a little bit. So um. We we can look at that. I added the summer numbers in, um really the biggest discrepancy uh would be um. In the fall of um. Sorry, um. If if you look at our, if you look at our summer, uh this past summer, twenty twenty three, um. We we've got to increase our offerings, um I I think it's just a matter of. We don't have enough courses uh that students are are needing to take, and so we'll be working with Sung and her group to to kind of help with our summer offerings. Our summer is not all, not a huge, huge contributor, but uh we we certainly would like to see that number higher. Uh than the way, than where it is and 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 somewhere in that median uh mid-range where we have been one twenty nine to one fifty three. You know, one thirty, one thirty five would be, would be ideal for us, I think, for our summertime uh FTE. Um this next one is just the total of all of those, so fall, summer, or excuse me, fall, spring and summer. Um so in twenty sixteen, we were at total FTE is is twenty five ninety four, so just just shy of twenty six hundred. And um through things that have happened, we're down to twenty one thirty six, so um again. No fault, we're not trying to place the blame, but you know, what what attributes to those numbers being different that Brian was talking about? And you know, s- seeing different trends around um higher ed. Um you know, we certainly have an opportunity there um to uh to do some, to do some good. Uh just, just for reference though, um. Our preliminary numbers, and I think we've talked about it in this group, but our preliminary uh numbers for the fall uh were were low. Um we shifted our enrollment and but we're still, we still think we're gonna be somewhere down around four percent. I don't know if that, have we finalized that number? Well, we probably can't record.
We can't do it till everything is certified.
Yeah, so we're still waiting on some courses to certify, but basically we shifted our semester a little bit. And so those, those, some of those twenty day numbers didn't get classes that were already started certified, so we'll pick them up. Plus, our second eight weeks or our late start classes doubled from the previous semester or previous fall. So we're, you know, we're we're still in a little bit of a decline, but. Again, the 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 process of this is identifying what the problem is, taking a look at it and seeing it in in these terms. And then saying, okay, what do we need to do to fix it? And and that's the, that, those are the next steps. So this is FTEs. Uh and then you can see it just by the year, it's basically all of those previous slides put into one.
So you're downward, the downward trend started between twenty and twenty one.
The downward trend started um in twenty to between twenty and twenty one.
Yeah.
Yes.
So was there anything that happened?
So actually COVID would have been in the fall of twenty twenty, which was one of our higher ones. Fall twenty twenty?
It was March of twenty twenty.
Right, so your uh.
Yeah.
Your numbers, and if you look at your fall number. Of twenty twenty, we were, we were back up. And so our fall, fall is the green, so thirteen, I mean, we were steady and then it just.
Twenty twenty one is when everything started to de- decrease to flat snitch.
So. Yes. The, does that answer your question or? Do we?
We talked about the implementation of program, what year did that happen?
That would have happened in the fall of twenty one. So.
So those numbers wouldn't have been affected.
Yeah, but I think um they, the other problem is after COVID, I mean, most of the people, if. I shouldn't say people, but students, when they graduate high school, they can go directly into workforce and make more money than coming here and then doing it. So that's another reason we lost enrollment, it's like most of the kids, oh, I'm getting twenty dollar an hour, what benefit do I have?
That's about the time that all the manufacturers in town got into a wage war.
Yeah.
Trying to, trying to hire folks.
Yeah.
In the spring and twenty one.
Yeah.
Or do you have? Data from the rest of the state that shows a similar trend?
It's, it's available, um there, you'll see a similar trend. The difference between us and everyone else's is they're starting to trend upwards ever so slightly. Um and we're still um on the, on the, on the negative side. Um again, based on preliminary numbers, we are um. We will end, not based on, our projection is we're gonna be somewhere down around four percent. Um most institutions that I've talked to my counterparts at, they are going to be flat or maybe one or two percent down. Um ourselves and um an institution directly to the west of us are the, are the two that are still experiencing. That plus that more than two percent decline, more than one to two percent decline. So.
Are you able to? And then do a deeper dive into programs to see where that, how that's shaking out? You know, have to answer or share at this point about this.
You know, it, a lot of it's our, a lot of it's our general ed, uh is where we're seeing the most. Um most decline, um and and again, I think that goes to, um you know, our, our. For example, and this isn't the only program, but or classes, set of classes, but you know, our, our. Basic general ed, math, English, some of those courses that usually trend and stay higher. They're flat or even lower than what they've been in the past, and so it's. My thoughts on that is, is so the question is, is where does that come from, you know, and so I really think that. Most of that is dealing with, students are taking those general ed courses at their high schools before they get here. And so they don't have to take them here.
So this doesn't include concurrent?
This does include concurrent, but if if I'm a student that lives in Johnson County and I take. My comp law and through Johnson County, when I come here, I don't have to take it, and so that that points to to that information. Why, why those, that's, I think that's part of the reason why, is because concurrent enrollment is what a lot of folks are trying to do. And a lot of students are trying to do it because they can get out and get done it a little bit quicker, so. That would be my guess. Okay, any other questions?
Just, just the 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 comments, I've spent some time down at Coach State recently and they're experiencing a decline in enrollment also.
Yes, um you know, your big flagship for your institutions. Uh they're, they're experiencing a little bit of of an increase, uh and again, they're starting to turn, turn upward. But by and large. For us. You know, we need to focus on staying flat uh for the next couple of years and and if we can do that. With a little bit of an increment upward, we'll, you know, I think we'll, we're gonna get things going in the right, on the right path. Uh but we can. Uh, but we can, there's more, we'll talk about that. Okay, any other questions? All right, so here's your fall credit hour production. Um, and so again, you can see twenty sixteen, we were nineteen-five almost and now we're sixteen-five. Um, and so those are, those are, those are big numbers for us, okay? Um, because those, that's revenue, that's tuition revenue, that's, um, uh, fees that are generated plus just the impact that those students have, have on campus. Uh, one of the things, uh, Brian, that we also looked at was, uh, our online and our online is. Tom refreshed my memory when we looked at that, was that, was it flat or was it just a little bit low?
A little low, I significantly lower. Well, if you go pre-COVID, I, we're still up. But we had a dramatic shift when we went from, you know, we were offering a bunch of online stuff, let's keep it that way. And so we went from twenty-three-hundred or so and, uh, right now we're at twenty-six-hundred, which is three hundred up. But there was a point right after COVID that we were at thirty-three, so we're down probably a pretty, about seven hundred hours from the pre-COVID.
So, and. I don't, I wasn't an online student, I didn't, uh, that didn't work for me, but it does work for some students. We, you know, we need to be aware of that, but those numbers do impact the total as well. So take a look at our spring credit hours, again, a little bit of a decline, um, which is typical for your springs, for fall to spring. Um, but we're, we're taking a look and trying to, trying to determine, you know, I looked at our, uh, numbers through the state and our retention rate is higher than the average. So our fall to spring retention rate is actually pretty good. Um, I've got Ben working on, on a report that will verify that, but our, our, um, and I know that because when I was looking, when I was doing the interview process for this, I looked at those numbers to see. And we are higher, we're just slightly above fifty percent, uh, in that particular year that I was looking at. So, uh, that's, that's, that's better than what, what everyone else was doing, not everyone, but most folks in this state were doing. So our retention hasn't seemed to be too much of an issue based on that report, but we'll have more information about that, um, here in a couple of weeks. When, uh, Ben, uh, in his free time can get me that report. He doesn't have much free time. Our summer hours are, uh, by credit hours, not by students, but by credit hours, um, again, down, um. You know, that has a lot to do with the elimination of, of a particular sport because those students came in early, um. And so, uh, that does, uh, correlate there. And then your totals by year, uh, for credit hour production, um, this is, this is what we're, what we're experiencing. Um, you know, again, not pointing, pointing blame, but now that we understand, now we can start to do some things and, and really ask some questions and really get, get into working on, on the right, doing, doing some things right to, to engage this, okay? Any questions about credit hours? Okay, so what does this mean? It means that we have a lot of opportunities, okay? We have some opportunities to increase our enrollment, we know that. We have some opportunities to, to create some new programs, okay? We also have an opportunity to work on our image, okay? Because what is it that, um, you know, what, what can we do to, to, to help with that? But really the biggest thing that I think we have an opportunity for is anytime you see numbers like that and they're continuing to trend downward. Um, the thing that I look at is, is what's our identity? And that's when we get back, that's what we need to get back to. And I've asked a couple of people in this room and in the community, just anecdotally, hey, what, what, what do you think our identity is? And everyone's, everyone has a little bit of a different answer. And so trying to figure that out and really establish ourselves and what is our identity, I think is really what's going to drive that. Because when we establish and we define what our identity is, we're going to start to commit resources to that. We're going to start to see that we're going to start to experience an upward trend. But we have to, we have to know what it is that we are, why we are and what we are and who we are. Okay, so those are the things that we, we need to do and that we, we will do, okay? So where do we go from here? Um, we look at trying to find ways to strategically increase enrollment. We can artificially increase enrollment and it's not sustainable. So really, my goal is to establish a model that's sustainable. What is it that we are going to do that's, that's, that we can, that will last, right? So student engagement is a big piece of that, okay? We want students on this campus to be engaged, to see the students in the, in the gym, uh, at midnight madness last evening was awesome. To see students at the, um, theater event, uh, the, the dueling pianos, um, and what was that other? The what? The hypnotist, the, or magician, the magic show. To see those students, you know, providing them with options, that's, that's going to be important, okay? Getting our students involved and, and talking with them about it. Um, the other thing is, is that this isn't a one department or one unit problem. This is a college-wide problem, this, this belongs to all of us. And so how do we figure this out? This isn't a, well, admissions go out and recruit more people, athletics go out and recruit more people, Sonya offer more classes. This is a collective of all of those and we all have a part to play in this, okay? And then the recruitment and retention of students, that is everyone's responsibility on this campus. From myself all the way down to, to our environmental service workers, students. Um, we, they are responsible as much as I am responsible for the recruitment and the retention of students. And so we have to have that mindset, not saying that we don't, but we need to preach that. We need to make sure that everybody understands that it is your responsibility. And so when you see a student on a tour, stop and say hello. Introduce yourself as a faculty member or as a staff member, don't let someone walk around campus without being interacted a dozen or so times. Uh, the other piece is bringing students onto campus, right? Bringing groups and organizations onto campus and helping ourselves by starting early with the recruitment process, okay? So those are things that I, that, that we need to do strategically increase enrollment. The next thing I think we need to work on is the development of new and enhancement of current programs, okay? We need to find those low co- low-cost, high-return programs and, and start to find those, um. Don't know. I couldn't, if you asked me, hey, what's a low-cost, high-return program, I couldn't tell you. But I know that that is out there someplace and we need to find that and we need to figure out, is this something that we can do? And does it work for our community and for the people that we serve? Because this isn't just about creating a program and then saying, okay, we did it and then we're done with it. But finding out what it is that, that the community wants and that the people we serve want and then try to, and, and then working with that. Promoting low enrollment programs, okay? We hired Chris Goddard in our music department, um, as our band music instructor and he is doing an awesome job. If we can, if, you know, if he can, if his numbers pan out like, like he thinks they're going to, like he wants, we're going to be, that's going to help us a lot, okay? Um, and so I'm really excited to see what he's doing and the opportunities that he's going to bring. So we need to promote those low enrollment, we need to boost those up, uh, theater, band, uh, some of the other programs that we have that are that, that we, we don't have a lot of students in. Uh, increase support for programs which make up our identity, okay? So what is one of those programs that make up our identity and, and support them? Okay, um, you know, if you were to ask me today, if you were to ask me during the enrollment process or the interview process, what I thought was one of our programs, I program I did is obviously that. And so we, I'm not saying I don't believe it's ag, I'm not saying I do believe it's ag, okay? So I'm switching them on this topic, but I'm saying that we need to promote those programs, okay? We need to help boost those enrollments, um, and then identify partners or opportunities for local and regional partnerships. We are the community college of, we are the college of, of Bourbon County. And so we need to be looking at partnerships with our local industries and seeing what is it that we can do to help you? What are your needs and how can we serve those needs? And whatever that is, we need to get together and, and have that conversation and try to figure some things out. The other thing is we need to increase the visibility, okay? Um, within the community, within the region, and I think we're starting that in the community. We've got students at every event, uh, every parade, every event, we're, we're showing up in, in places in the county. And so we're doing some things to show this, to increase our visibility within the community. Now we need to do that within the region. Had a conversation today with the radio station, uh, about getting some ads put out there, going to start looking at, um, you know, I, I hate it on Sunday afternoons when I'm trying to cheer on the best team in the NFL against the Chiefs. Um, my personal opinion, and I have to look and see a university to the south of us and a community college to the, uh, to the west of us. I see commercials for them and I don't see them for us. And so why, why don't we have some, a presence there? So establishing that, showing people that, hey, we are part of this region and we can provide you with a quality education. Um, I think is important for us to do as well. Okay, so that's where we go from here. Um, are there any questions about the enrollment piece? That was in a, it, in a quick nutshell. Any questions or comments or?
What you're, are, are you setting up like a working group to try and get your arms around this or does that fall to, who's that fault to?
Well, ultimately, you're looking at them, so, uh, I can, I can, I can identify that. So one of the things that Sonya and I talked about, um, the other day was, um, I wanted her to be able to introduce, I said three, and she said, well, I already have two almost ready, new programs ready to introduce. And I said, well, now the number's five, so, uh, it, it's going to take that, it's going to take a conversation about, okay, at, at the executive cabinet level and say, okay, here's, we've laid this out, laid it out to the board and everybody. So what steps are we going to be taking? And so one of the questions that I think it's important for us to start asking is, is what have you done to help us accomplish this? And that's something that we should be asking ourselves daily, if not weekly, most definitely monthly. And so we have some, we have some committee structures that, um, we are in the process of setting up. Some of them are old, not old, but some of them have been in existence, some of them are new. One of the things that we're looking to create is a, um, scholarship review committee that looks at how are we, how are we doing our scholarship programs? And is it the most effective for us and is it the best for the students? Um, Tom's got the strategic enrollment management group that's looking at the recruitment and the retention of students and how we can, how we can do that. And they're meeting every couple of weeks, is that correct?
Every two weeks, we've got about fifteen to twenty faculty and staff that meet, uh, and some really good things are coming out of that.
So those are two new ones, but we've always had the assessment committee. So that assessment looks at, you know, our classroom assessments, but one of the things that I'm going to challenge them to do is to assess how we're doing things and see how we can improve it. Um, so we have a bunch of committees, um, I, at our executive cabinet meeting, we've had that on the ca- on the agenda for the last two weeks and we haven't gotten to it yet, but it's on there for tomorrow. So we'll see how that, uh, how that ends up, but those are the things, yes, we're looking at some committee structures to help us identify that.
Uh, one more question. Do we have a way to capture, survey something, the students' opinion of what they're giving? I don't want to call it satisfaction, but you know, something that gives them a way to say, I love Fort Scott Community College or it's meh, or it's terrible, whatever.
So there are some, uh, some survey, uh, options out there that are like the N S I, so the National Student Success. Uh, I don't know what the. Engagement, yeah, um, engagement, uh, so there's that, there's no limits, there's some, there's some, there's some national benchmarking tools that we can get access to that we can start to use for surveys. I don't know when the last time.
I think advising does it, uh, every year they, either they do.
It's during, it's in the spring.
Yeah, they do, and, uh, one year they do their in-house, uh, survey they created, so they alternate that one, one year it's N S I, right? And the other year it's the in-house, which is based off of N S I, so they, they do that. They collect the information or feedback from the students and whatever the areas are, they try to work on that, so, yeah.
So we seen that?
I don't think you have, uh, we can certainly arrange for that.
I think it'd be interesting.
It would be, and I think that, uh, even from previous administrations, Julie, do you ever remember here, seeing the results of it? Cause I don't think that I ever have either.
Hmm.
Uh, and so it was something that we gave, but, uh, we did, and I think that it kind of went to a database that we were able, that some people were able to go in and see and access. Uh, but if there wasn't any glaring problems on it, then it just kind of, uh, was a status quo.
So one of the things that H L C is going to look for when they come to do our visit is they're going to look to say, do you survey students and then how do you use that data? Because a lot of students, a lot of institutions survey students and they don't effectively use the data. And so, um, that's going to be one of the things that we start to talk about as part of our preparation for H L C is what are we doing with the data that we survey? And receive from students, the feedback that we receive, because that's, that I, I have been a part of, um, accreditation teams that have given people deans and, and negative comments because of their use or lack thereof, of, of the, uh, of the data that they receive. So we're going to, we'll be, we'll be looking at that.
I'd like to see three a year, one at the end of each semester and one at the end of summer classes.
The, the thing that you, you run the risk of doing when you do that many is you oversaturate it and then you just get students that just go through and just start clicking, yes, 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 or they, or they just do one. They go one, two, three, four, four, three, two, one, and then, and so.
Survey should be like one question, really, I mean, honestly.
I, I see what you mean.
I won't, I don't like taking long surveys, you know? Maybe call up, hey, I'd like to do a quick survey. How long is quick, you know, I mean, it's different. Anyway, we can, yeah.
But we can, uh, we can definitely look at that and, and I did realize that we had done the survey, so we will, I will probably ask for that um, in the next few weeks to kind of take a look at it. One of the other things that we're going to do, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Visiting Michigan this, but for the most of September, I didn't just go through football games.
Although you went to four of them, I think you did, the football games, but.
Uh, I also attended, uh, one of the radiography annual meetings that we have. Um, um, and, uh, one of the programs that was presented, uh, was on mobile radiology. Of going to people's homes, uh, you've got to see some of that and, um, and healthcare. Uh, I mean, the, the machines I can guarantee that I will achieve, but, but those kinds of things are going to happen because now that they're beginning to, uh, um, have students on rotation through that process of, uh, in their, to their, their, um, program. So some of the students, uh, in also in the sun program now rotating to the, uh, they spend a week with one of the mobile units and go to the zones and, and do the, uh, procedure. The image is projected to some doctor somewhere who does the interpretation. Um, but that's kinds of things that, uh, you talk about having programs. Um, they're not huge yet, but they're going to get larger. Those kinds of things, but probably in other healthcare areas might start thinking of what's going to be happening with, uh, with the whole process of healthcare, does that change?
And there's definitely some opportunities there, uh, there's a tremendous amount of federal grant dollars that are going. Tremendous amount of federal grant dollars that are going to help offset the cost of the machines that are. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, if not more than that. And so, um, you know, we, we've, uh. I think we've got a great, uh. I think we've got some good things in the works for the nursing program and so, and so there's an opportunity to definitely do some expansion. Um, we do have another institution in the region that is pretty heavy on some of those programs. And so we, you know, um, we will get some pushback, okay, or if we try to duplicate uh programs that are similar to what they're doing. Uh, but. Um, you know, we just need to, we need to figure out and, and find that niche for ourselves. So.
Uh, sure. I. The Kansas Board of Region produces a uh data book which has uh statistics from tuition and fees to enrollment. To financial status and everything across every institution in the state. Uh, and so I'm looking at the FTE from seventeen to twenty-two, which obviously doesn't have the recent semester. Uh, but community colleges as a whole are down seventeen point two percent, which is eighty-one hundred community college students across the state. Uh, out of that, we are seventh in terms of uh enrollment change in the last five years. Uh, and so while it's not great, uh, it is certainly a trend across community colleges. And I do think that there is plenty of opportunities for growth and, and change and whatnot. Uh, but it's certainly not all gloom and doom. And it's uh something that community colleges as a whole across the state are dealing with and really need to figure out. How to get those eighty-one hundred students back, because that's a lot. Uh, that would be the second biggest institution in the state, just community college students lost.
Any other questions about enrollment? Alright, so um, most of you all know I now supervise maintenance and I forgot to include some of the things that they're doing. Uh, so one of the things that I've, uh, that Jared and his crew have done is the back door outside of. Uh, the hedges administration building, um, if you notice there, there is a retaining wall that is, that is propping up. Um, we used to have rocks there, there were significant runoff of dirt. And it became an issue when you get a hard rain and you know, things were starting to back up in that sewer. So uh Jared and his crew, with the help of some outside folks, um, put up the retaining wall and you can see that um. It looks pretty good. Um. And it's, it's keeping it clean so that ways people can access the uh, the back of the building through uh with wheelchair and I don't have to walk through. Uh, couple inches of mud and, and water. Um, Julie McDaniel was mad at me for, not mad at me, but she said, could you not have found a better picture than the one that has their parent? Um. Bill uh on, on the bottom, but um, uh, but I, I can't. Uh, I fixed the wall problem, I can't fix the other problem. So really excited for Jared and his crew to be able to get that done. Some of the other things that they've been working on, uh. They have, uh. Uh, they got a, they were able to hook up the heat, uh, because uh, for some reason, the gas line is going into the uh Arnold Arena. Uh, was, was unhooked during the renovation, so they got that back up and running. So now if we needed heat in the building, we have it. Uh, we, you, you air conditioning the facility, now we can, now we have heat. Uh, and given the way the morning started off today, um, and yesterday was, some people may have wanted a little bit of heat, uh, but we did not turn ours on. Uh, so uh, in the, in that facility. Um, so uh, those are just two things that they were working on. Um, wanted to talk to you about the Gordon Park celebration was um, two weeks ago, uh, this is from Kirk. Um, great attendance for the events throughout the weekend. Uh, unfortunately, one of the honorees, Deborah Willis, was unable to attend due to an illness, but she is, um. Uh, she has indicated that she would like to come to a different one and receive her award, and so I think they're working that out. It was a huge success, uh, and they had fifty-six students and staff from the Gordon Parks Academy, uh, Academy. Um, were in attendance. Um, I was meeting, I had a meeting this afternoon and Kirk more or less barged in, uh. Uh, not really, but he was pretty persistent with his knocking because he wanted to share that um, a couple of years ago. Bill Roden, uh, who is a bestselling author, was here for the, uh, for the celebration. Um, he called Kirk on his cell phone and told him that. There is a tremendous amount of conversation buzz about the Gordon Park celebration that we just hosted out in New York. And he had heard it from multiple different people that he associates with. And so he called him personally to say congratulations, and so uh, that's a big thing. Bill was here, I think in twenty-twenty-one, I think this was the year that he came out uh and received an honor, but um. You know, he's been on ESPN, he's written several books, I mean, he's, he's, when you talk about. Um, sports reporters and sports writers, and if you mentioned they, Bill Roden, everybody looks at it. Uh, so it, it was, it was, we're glad to get that positive feedback and Bill said that he will come back. Um, at some point, we just invited, so I think he'll be, uh, he'll be back soon. Um, so state and federal, um, continue to complete state and federal reporting requirements. Um, I just got an email today to participate in a Zoom call with, uh, a request to participate in a Zoom call with Senator Roger Marshall. Um, uh, just a kind of a town hall, but, but uh, to answer, to talk to him and uh, his staff. Uh, KSVN is planning to be here in late.
November.
November, um, to do their, uh, their visit uh with our nursing department. And then I had planned on being in Manhattan tomorrow to visit with K-State leadership, but there was a. I needed to be someplace else, so I will be going, um. Several other community college presidents are going and they're gonna report back, um, but we're interested to hear what K, K-State has to say. So uh, that's on the state and federal level, on the local level. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we hosted the Union Town four-H students. Um, we donated food to the pantry, uh, we're excited for that. Uh, we also hosted in September, we also hosted the Free River Student Athletic Summit. Um, we are having preliminary discussions with a local USD. About use of our facilities for an event, I don't wanna jinx that, so that's all the information that I'm giving you. But um, I think it would be a great opportunity, uh, if the college can partner with said USD. Uh, to, for their, for their events. Uh, we did host the Midnight Madness, uh, and the Alumni Rodeo as, as well as the, um. Gordon Park Celebration, uh, I do have a request to talk to Coach Cross and Kirk about. Can we split the weekends that those are on? Because a lot of people, I think, were conflicted about going to the Alumni Rodeo event and indoor the Gordon Park Celebration. And, and so we really need to do a better, a better job, but um. I, I'm just gonna have a conversation, see what they, see if they're willing to do it. And then participation in the Pioneer Harvest Fiesta Parade as well, we had several athletic teams participating in the parade. So. Uh, internal staffing, uh, one of the things I wanna do is appreciate Jolie Carswell, who is our head women's basketball coach. Uh, and it's assisting admissions, Tom had mentioned that, that she's been on the road, uh, visiting CPCs. It's a benefit to her because it helps her recruit for a program, but it also helps us because it gives us the ability to have coverage back here. Uh, when people are on the road, uh, we can, three is better than two, uh, in that situation. Um, all, uh, and as we talked about, uh, added Marcy Myers to uh my staff as executive assistant. Um, also Gina Shelton is currently reporting to me and then Jared Dorsey. Uh, is also uh, reporting to, uh, to the office. Uh, Rory Chaplin is working with enhancements of our tech aid program and so uh, some workforce development things. And then Caleb Tipton is also assisting with student life, um, he is our women's assistant basketball coach. And uh, he's helping with some of those events, um, to uh, help us, help provide stability, especially with Marcy being abruptly. Stolen from student life. I'm surprised I haven't had a. Dead animal on my front lawn or in my chair, uh, at the hands of Tom. But, um, anyway, uh, I think that is it, are there any questions for me?
Okay, sure.
Have a motion for executive session. Move that we adjourn to executive session for thirty minutes. Beginning at six fifty. Fifty. Uh, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. And as with relation to organizational structure. Um, knowing that action to be taken. No, I need a second, second. So moving second, Julie, would you call for the vote?
Yours?
Yes.
Our.
Yes.
Old.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Carlos Meyer.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Said your name again, I was on roll. Did I not say your name, is it your name? No, I was just on roll, I was reading, cause anyway, I was like.
Each of the job, your place.
They have requested twenty more minutes of executive session.
Yeah. Okay.
We're adding ten more minutes to the executive session. Thank you.
Fire?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Ewens?
Yes.
Uh, now, I need a motion to adjourn.
Proven.
Second.
Second in all his favor.
Aye.
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 The most leading is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks everybody.